We, so far so good.
Well, welcome out there once again. My show, it's always a pleasure to be here and it's always a pleasure to have you out there in the audience. I have, well, I'm gonna make an announcement first, just to remind people of the Diamond Vocational High 50-year gala at the Venus Mile this Saturday. Doors are gonna open, which means you can enter, you know, go into the room around 5:30. There'll be a social hour from 5:30 to 6:00, a little speaking program from 6:30, quarter to 7:00, maybe till 7:00, but brief. And then there'll be dinner and some auctions and things like that, and dancing. So it really, it's the 50th anniversary of the new school being on Stonehaven Road. The school itself is over 100 years old. It was founded by Father Diamond, who actually founded the Portsmouth Abbey. He was quite, quite a person. Graduated from Harvard, was a priest, I think he was a Methodist, but he converted to a Catholicism. So, it's this Saturday. I don't know if you get any tickets, but you can check with the school, they're $50 each, which is a good price because if you know the Venus, the food is excellent, excellent. So, you know, probably, it's the last announcement I'll make about that show because it's Saturday. Well, I have people, a group, that have been on my show a number of times before. It's always interesting for me, at least, to have them on here. And they're very informative and they give a lot of information in regards to what goes on in Tiverton, the political situation, the economic situation in Tiverton. And of course, they have the new casino and the money is rolling in, hopefully. So, they were on a charter commission and they did an excellent job. They were all elected to the charter commission. Now they're running for the town council. And I wanna have them introduce themselves. From my left, right along, Richard.
I'm Richard Rohn.
Nancy Driggs.
Robert Coulter.
Donna Cook.
Well, now, you're all on the charter commission, Tiverton Charter Commission. And let me ask you, is that commission finished at this point?
Yes, it is.
It is complete.
Served that?
There are no more meetings in our commission, the duration has expired.
Now, what was the general outcome of, I mean, you put a lot of work into it, you ran for office, you were on that commission for months and months, many meetings, hearings, et cetera. What was, what was the outcome?
Well, we were on, the duration was a year from the time the election was certified. So I think the last day was July 18th. During that year, Rob was actually the chairman of the commission. And we spoke to all department heads, we spoke to many individuals requesting their proposals, if they had any things they wanted to see dealt with in the charter. And then at the end of it, we prioritized different proposals. And I think, as you recall, we ran on a particular slate, all of us. We were endorsed by the Tiverton Taxpayer Association. And we ran to protect the financial town referendum and to keep the casino revenue that was anticipated in the budgeting process so that it could be used for tax relief if the taxpayers wanted it. So, at the end of it, we came up with 20 proposals. We passed them into the town council to be given to the voters on the ballot November 6th, and the town council is refusing to do that.
Town council refuses to do that. Accepted no proposal?
Nope.
At all? Refused?
That's right. Every single one, and actually, we had narrowed it down to 20, but of the about 140 proposals which the commission formally accepted and approved, perhaps half of those, we narrowed it to a long list of 40, and then the short list of 20 that Nancy just spoke of. There are, you could pick and choose perhaps a segment of one or two that they repackaged in some way, but any fair depiction of it is that they blocked the entire thing. Which, by the way, is the first time in history, in the history of Tiverton, that the elected charter review commission has been blocked entirely. And the Board of Canvassers also refused to put these items on the ballot following the instructions of the town council's appointed lawyer. So it was very controversial. We're very disappointed in that. And that's certainly part of the reason why I think many of us are running for town council, certainly not the only reason, but a critical reason.
And there was no recourse in regards to the 20 proposals? They were legally not obligated to accept any one of them, is that correct?
We believe that they legally are, but there has not been a legal action filed as of yet. And, you know, speaking just for myself, we would hope to see a political resolution of that rather than a legal resolution of that.
A political resolution would be if you get onto the town council.
Taking over the town council.
And you'll be in control.
Correct.
But will that help? Let's say you did get on and you had a majority, how would that help in regards to the proposals?
Well, right now, our platform running for town council is not only to vote again for this taxpayer-endorsed slate of people, but to tell the people to vote no on the charter proposals that the town council is putting forth. Just vote no on them. So in that case, if we do get a majority, we don't have any business to undo. And one of our intentions would be to make sure these proposals, whether it's in a special election, that they get put before the taxpayers, our proposals.
Let me ask you this now, if you had, you get onto town council and you have a majority, can you then pick a proposal or, you know, more than one, and pass it as some sort of a resolution?
We wouldn't pass it as a resolution. We would, what we want is, we just want to let the voters decide. The voters elected a charter review commission, it worked for a year, and we just think that they ought to have the right to vote. And what I think the town council, this current town council has done, is essentially corrupted the entire process and made it a sham. And so, you know, the goal here is not that a new town council just does what it wants. The goal here is that a new town council lets the people decide what they want. And that's what I think you would see most likely if a group like us were there.
But the 20 proposals would be behind you, in the sense that, well, that...
They would be behind us, but there would be no reason to convene another charter review. We already had a charter review.
Yeah.
Here are the proposals, there are 20 of them. Bring them forward and put them on a special, special election.
A special election. So you would, if you were on a town council, you could call for a special election?
Yes, we could.
And have those placed on the ballot individually, 20 of them?
Mm-hmm.
Now, would the people have, would they vote for each one, one at a time, or all at once?
One at a time.
One at a time.
One at a time.
Well, yeah, one by each, they could either accept or reject.
Each one.
Right.
Yeah.
And we could have that special election at the same time as the financial town referendum. In other words, there's no additional cost.
When is the town financial?
In May.
In May?
Yeah.
Oh, so you got, you have time.
We will.
Yeah. So, running for city, excuse me, town council, how many on the town council?
There's seven. Seven seats. And so we put our candidates forward to give a voice to the people. This town council has put forward proposals that would change the FTR, very tax-unfriendly. And also, if it isn't bad enough about a proposal that they want put through, is that they are also supporting an ordinance, a law actually, to give the town council total control over the $3 million from the casino money, which would not be part of the FTR or the budget process. They would be in total control of the casino money.
The town council.
That's right.
Now, that's a big concern. You voiced that many, many times before when you came on the show in regards to the casino money and how, where it would go in the town government structure and who would have authority to spend it and how, is that correct?
Correct.
Right. The authority to spend it and how would be through the budget committee and the FTR. And that's, that was one thing that we wanted in the charter, was we kept saying things, "The budget is the budget." And it doesn't make much sense when you say that. But what they were trying to do is say, "When the budget committee formulates their budget and it goes through the FTR and it is voted on by the voters, that is your budget. You follow that budget. You don't move money around unless one particular item becomes depleted."
And you...
That is a budget.
Yeah.
All right. So, the town council does not have control over how that budget gets formulated, the people do. Right? The town council is to execute that budget.
I see, which makes a lot of sense and very fair that way to the people of Tiverton. So, when is the date of the election?
November 6th. And if I could just add something to what Donna said in terms of their proposals. Two proposals were actually, first of all, the town council did not abide by any of the charter commission's deadlines for proposals, so they came in months after the deadline. But one proposal by John Edwards was actually to eliminate the budget committee and eliminate the FTR and let the town council just be the one that adopts the budget.
That didn't pass?
Luckily not. So the town council instead went with a proposal put forward by Patricia Hilton. And that one raises the signature count for an elector petitioner. Currently, it's 50. We wanted to change it to 28, to be, to mimic the amount of time and energy people have to get signatures to run for town council, for instance. But they've changed it to 200, which clearly raises, if it passes...
And if I can interrupt.
Yeah.
Councilor Hilton has said that's just a slight increase. That's her words. And so I would suggest, as people watch this debate, when you watch this town council say that, "You still have your FTR." Sure, you still have your FTR, but it's a dead letter. What they've done is they've added so many restrictions and so, and they've changed and raised the hurdle so much, slightly increasing a signature count by fourfold in the same amount of time, being one of about 15 changes that they've made, that essentially destroys the ability of the taxpayer or voter to come in and put in their own, their own motions and their own budgets, just like we had in financial town meetings for a couple hundred years and we had a financial town referendum since.
And frankly, having been on the co-chair of the committee that recommended the town council to change the FTR, and actually, Rob was on the town council at that time, we put a lot of thought into things like the remand provision, which meant that any elector with 50 signatures could, could put an alternate budget on the proposal, on the budget. But if they didn't feel comfortable defending it, they could also choose the option to remand it if the voters voted for their total amount, to remand to the budget committee to make it work. Hilton's proposal eliminates the remand. And the last thing it does, which I think is egregious, is it leaves it up to the town council-appointed town solicitor to decide whether an elector petitioner proposal is legal.
So, that, I guess, is the basis insofar as why you wanna run for town council and get on the town council, is to hopefully be able to rectify some of the concerns that you have. And it seems that there's a little problem over there in, you know, in paradise, right?
Yes. It's essentially the completion of our task. Our task was to get before the voters our problems, our questions, and that did not occur. We took it right up as far as we could go. We argued with the town council, we argued with, argued with the Board of Canvassers, and it was denied.
Now, what's the term of office for the town council?
Two years.
Two years. And how many do you expect to be running? When, now, let me ask you this. How many signatures do you have to get at this point?
We all have the signatures, 50, wasn't it?
All right.
Yeah, 50. So all the incumbents are running again, except one.
Were you submitted your papers already?
So six out of...
Or each one of you submitted your papers?
So there are seven of us running on a slate.
When is the deadline to submit papers?
It was back in June 30th, I think it was.
Oh, June 30th?
Yeah.
I think that's correct.
Yeah.
Or maybe June 20th.
Well, you have it a little different. No, maybe you don't. Okay, June 30th, so, all right.
So we have six of the, six of the seven incumbents are running again, seven of us are running, and I think that's 13, is that it?
Nineteen total.
There are 19 total, I think, then there are some other random...
In your group, how many were on a charter commission?
Nine.
Nine. And seven, seven of you are going to run for the...
For the town council.
Yeah.
And two are running for budget committee.
All right, so all charter commissions are running for something. Now...
For the hills.
The, the election is November 6th. Now, is that the general election or is that the preliminary?
That's general.
You don't have a preliminary?
It's general, and in Tiverton, it's not, although it is the general election, the Tiverton election is nonpartisan, so you do not have to be party-affiliated.
So it's just one election?
That's right.
And how many, okay, so, seven on the council, so seven will go, the highest, seven will go forward as main councils. We have a little different way in the city. We have a preliminary election in September, when we have an election year, and then we have the final or general election in November. So that, it has to be, in a preliminary, you have to make, it'd be at least the 18th on the, you know, from the top, and you go forward. So, you know, number 19 doesn't go forward, number 20 goes and we're forward. That eliminates having a general election by 300 people running.
Yeah.
And we're all, all positions are at large. There's no, we don't have wards.
Yeah, forward has no wards either. So, what does it look like? Have you, what have you been doing as far as campaigning so far? Are you here, I know, but you're out there with the signs?
Well, we have three letters to the editor in this week in the Secana Times. We had one last week, and that campaign is going. Signs will be going in shortly.
So you have to have, it's pretty much basic, basically individual signs. So we'll see a sign out there, Nancy Driggs, Rob Coulter.
Except, they will all be red, white, blue stripes, which is the TTA.
They won't be combined like your name, Richard's name on one sign?
Yeah. The problem is if you try to get all the names...
They don't see any of them.
They don't, you won't see any of them. People are going by at 30 miles an hour, you know, and there's the sign over there, it's 100 feet away.
There you go. What's that say?
How much are you gonna read?
And you know, you can't put a sign up there.
No.
Because people's eyes are over here as they drive. They don't look up there. It's gotta be eye level, so when they go by...
It's actually interesting, there's, there's a lot of research on which font is the most easily visible for people driving by at 30, 40 miles.
I think that the trick is, especially with such a large field, like 19 candidates, is how does someone that doesn't live and breathe this every day know how to get information? And so you can read, you know, you'll, you'll see, there'll be people claiming something that isn't true, or they'll be claiming to be there for the taxpayers when they're actually not. And so, when you see the color scheme, it should send a signal, especially in a nonpartisan town like Tiverton, that this is a group of people that, you know, at least from the, and I should say, the Tiverton Taxpayers Association has a four-part platform. Everybody is, of course, very familiar with the taxpayer piece, which is very important. But just as important are the other three parts of TTA, which is the supporting your local businesses, community involvement, and good government. And we didn't, we talked a lot about the FTR and the casino, but there, the government, just general good government is in disarray, I think it's fair to say as well. So you'll see the connection through this, through those platforms.
So what is, what is your general opinion in regards to revenue from the casino? I know you talked about maybe holding taxes level, or maybe some tax break for homeowners. Am I correct? What revenue is coming in? And what is your idea as far as where it should be used?
It should be used where the taxpayers feel it should be used. I can tell you that most, I would say, it's safe to say the majority of people who, the casino narrowly passed, and I'd say the majority of people who voted for it, if you were to ask them, they voted for it with the expectation that it would provide tax relief.
Tax relief.
So if it gets put into the budget, whatever revenues come in, and the taxpayers get to decide. And so far, I think you remember a chart we brought at one point that showed how the, since the FTR came into being, it really has kept the taxes level.
Yeah.
So, and, or, you know...
Now, Tiverton is expected to get $3 million or $4 million per year, roughly?
Guaranteed.
Yeah, the minimum's supposed to be $3 million. They call it, to keep it out of the general fund, it was renamed the casino gaming revenue, which somehow was a different animal than any revenue that's supposed to go into the general fund. That's how they were to round it up just for the town council, calling, giving it a different name. The $1 million is supposed to come from the taxes and liquor fees and that sort of thing. That goes into the general fund. It's the $3 million that the town council has decided that they should have the right to spend only with no taxpayer input.
Oh, and that's a minimum, $3 million?
Minimum.
Okay, so you get... Take by the state, $3 million.
Yes.
By the state, okay.
Yeah.
So you get the, roughly a million for taxes and fees, et cetera, so that's $1 million.
Yeah.
And then you get the minimum $3 million...
For the casino gaming. And there's one other revenue sauce, which is, just gets my blood boiling, is the sports betting money. The state did kind of an underhanded thing.
You mean when you talk about simulcast?
Yeah, the sports betting's going to be there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and at Lincoln and Tiverton. And it's projected to be bringing in $23 million. Lincoln and Tiverton are only getting $100,000 apiece. That doesn't seem quite fair to me, considering we've let them come into our town, and it can only be done at a casino, the sports betting, from what I understand. So, it's a number of issues that maybe could have been handled a little bit better by the town council and how that was.
Now, can you go back? If you, if you get on a town council and you get five or six of you on a council, can you go back and look at these contracts? Look at these agreements, these negotiations?
Um, I don't, to me, that's an unknown right now. I don't know, but the process that went forward with it was, you know, they were waiting for us to say whether they could have the 24/7 allowable, to be able to have it open 24/7. And the original, they had never asked for that before. Originally, it was supposed to close about 1:00 or 2:00 and be open certain hours. And to me, that was negotiable, to be used for the sports betting, whether they got the 24/7 or not, and it just wasn't used very well trying to bargain with that. Kinda let it go.
Now, the casino money, I mean, the expectation is that it'll help out in some way. What is the town's budget to begin with? The amount?
Approximately $50 million, more or less.
$50 million?
For a town of 16,000 people, if you can believe it.
The school was the majority of it.
So are you saying it's a high budget?
$50 million for 16,000 people? That's high. In my book, that's a lot of money.
You know better than I do. So that's a high budget.
And it's gone up so dramatically in the last, you know, 10 to 15 years.
Where does the money go?
Well, it's the schools, isn't it?
The school, well, depending on how you allocate the school buildings, which sit on the town's books but are exclusively for the tool, the school's use, I think really roughly, you could say 30 million goes to the schools, 20 million goes to the town. Of the 20 million on the town side, I don't know, 15, 16, 17 goes to labor and benefits, something in that area code.
And we also have the library.
The library is on the town side. So there's a lot, there's a lot of, I mean, there is a lot of money in the town budget for a relatively small town, and it's sort of, kinda staggering to me how big that is and how big it keeps going.
Now, what is, what, how does the $3 million get based, you know, as far as, well, it's a minimum, you say. What triggers going over the $3 million? The casino seems to be doing very well. I mean, they bring in some big crowds over there. You know, those machines are really...
Well, they're brand new, and then of course, as the, as the area continues to populate more and more and more. In fact, I just happened to be in Connecticut last weekend, I think there's yet another casino coming to Connecticut. One, a concern that I think many of us share is that the town will become reliant on this casino revenue, and then that business model may be threatened over time.
But what triggers $3 million going up to $3,200,000? Is there some sort of an accounting mechanism that you're involved in?
It's total revenue.
It's the state, it's, so that part, those $3 million is part of the state law, which Donna was speaking to.
Is the state overseeing what's coming into the casino?
That's right.
And then they would be the ones, state, to decide if the town of Tiverton deserves more than just a minimum of $3 million?
There's a revenue sharing piece, so if more than $3 million comes in, then we will get a fraction of that that comes in.
Yeah, but how do you, how is that get figured?
It's a formula, isn't it?
They have a formula.
I don't, I don't know what the formula is.
But that's a matter of state law. So one of the concerns is can, will that state law be changed?
They keep books these days.
But there was no formula.
Hopefully the money doesn't go out of the back door like in Las Vegas when they started.
Right.
But...
But the sports betting, which Donna has been really sharp as the tack on top of, basically, the town, you know, kinda gave away the store, where, I mean, you can argue about the fractions, but at least there is a minimum and there is some potential for upside over the $3 million. But sports betting, which is, which is a huge, you know, kind of growth market.
Okay, I'm gonna get into one more question, and then we can go around and you can make your pitch. The, how does the town get paid? Minimum $3 million. Is it getting so much a month, so much every three months?
Quarterly.
I think it's quarterly.
Quarterly payment?
Quarterly, yeah.
Quarterly.
So you can, you can expect every quarter to get $750,000?
Well, the state does give us projections of how much we could expect during the next fiscal year.
No, I'm talking about the minimum, $3 million. If it's paid quarterly, it's $750,000.
Right. The minimum would be $750,000.
Yeah, all right, so that's guaranteed?
Yes.
All right, so you got a few months to go or so, and you'll be seeing that check come in for $750,000.
That's great.
That's right. We supported a lower budget, which counted on that, and everybody out in the TV world was told that that was irresponsible and how could you gamble with casino? Turns out, the casino not only opened, it opened early, and here we are. So we've overtaxed for this year's budget because we could have had more casinos.
Okay, let's go around the table, go over a minute, let us know why you're running and...
Well, I'm running to complete our work at the CRC. I also, I mean, there were a lot of good things that came out of the CRC, not just the FTR, but one of them was transparency into what goes on in the town. And I would like, regardless of what the town charter clearly states and what we had proposed, we as a commission, I mean, as a town council, can start following some of those proposals and start being and acting much more transparent.
Okay, thank you. Nancy?
Basically, I agree with Richard to complete our job. We won by a big margin and people expected our proposals to get to them. I feel very badly that they haven't.
Rob?
I'm just trying to stop the power grab, that's where, that's where I am.
Nancy?
I just want the taxpayer to be put first.
All right. You heard it from four candidates, the town council in Tiverton, you've got their views, and I'm sure that they'll be expousing more in the coming weeks about why they should be elected and what they can do for the town. So, keep, keep informed, and I'll see you next time. Matter of fact, next week, some of them are gonna come back. So if you have any questions, give me a call. So if you have any questions, give me a call and I'll make sure to ask. Thank you for being here. It's always, it's always a pleasure to have you here.